Hi, Rennie. Who's starting the meeting at City Hall?
Either Tony or Steve Shabat.
Okay. I will wait to see them need to be admitted. Thank you.
Yes. I got a definite okay from them. Hi Rita.
And you're all set on my end, Rennie, your live stream.
Good, I saw that, but no sign of somebody joining from the council chambers yet?
Actually, it says conference room two has logged in, so that must be chambers, but it's, I can't see the room, it's the city seal.
I wonder if they, I haven't turned on the, the screen yet. There we go. Well, good evening, everyone. Could somebody turn the screen so that the camera is, there we go, great, thank you. So Michelle Hirsch won't be attending. I think. Rita's here, so. I believe she's taking Michelle's place. Rita is, unless, Tony, do you want to do it officially?
Do what officially?
Are you taking, I need somebody to take. Michelle's place, oh, you're here.
I'm, I'm on, I'm on finance.
Sorry, Rita needs to take her place, sorry.
All right, if no one else, Rennie, if no one else, I was just sitting in, that's why I didn't come to City Hall, but if no one else is here for Michelle, I'll take her place.
Oh, great, I'd appreciate it if you would do that.
Okay.
Cause then that way we can get started.
Don is not here. Don is here. He went downstairs, so he starts, and we start getting the things, he's not here.
All right, I see you've got a big crowd there tonight. KPD draws them in. All right, so we're just waiting on Don Tom to come back up from downstairs. I'm gonna wait one more minute, if he's not back, we'll go ahead and get started. While we're waiting for that. I will let everyone know that I am attending virtually, and I am currently sitting in a hotel at eight sixty-six Third Avenue in New York City. And fourteen ten, if anybody wants to join me.
Can we stay over?
Come on down. All right, I saw Don, so we'll get started. The first item of business is KPD, we're starting with section three, one, two, zero, which is page eighty-six of your budget books. We see the first item, of course, well, first off. Deputy Chief, anything you all want to say in advance here, thank you for being here tonight, and anything you want to alert us to, or bring up before we get started, looking at the lines?
No, I think it's a fair budget, we met with the mayor and. Trolla Tui, and I believe that we kind of ironed out a lot of the wants, needs, and must haves, I think we're good to go.
All right, great, so the first item, of course, is the difference in regular pay, I'm assuming that this is first off due to the three. Three new officers we're looking at hiring for the Avert Program?
That's correct, there's the salary for three additional officers that will be starting with KPD sometime in January, and. We've, we've got through the hiring process, but unfortunately, just because of some changes in what the state requires from us, that it's been a little bit more prolonged than we'd like, but that's correct, that is a big portion of it.
Okay, are there any other increases in terms of person power in the department?
Just some additional contractual changes, but nothing that was done as a result of, we're currently out of contract with the city, the city and the union are currently out of contract. I know they're trying to negotiate now, but their increases are those that are contractually provided to them, so officers going from step two to step three, three to four, and so on.
Got you, okay, and, and you are though, there are a couple of positions that you're going to be able to fill that haven't been filled in the recent past, is that right?
Well, we currently, we have, the commission just met, and we did hire nine to fill all budgeted vacancies.
Oh, great.
Three new ones, the problem we're running into is that there's, those are conditional offers of employment, we've only been able to actually start two of them, the remaining number are still going through the requirements of psychological, medical, and polygraph examinations.
Okay, great, thank you for that. Let's see. Anything else that any members of the Budget Committee would like to bring up here in the KPD budget proper?
What is Miss Wainey's referred to? Twenty-seven thousand to thirty thousand?
What number?
Four oh four. Under. Under contracted expenses.
Right, four oh four, so the miscellaneous account, the revised budget for twenty twenty-one was at thirty-two thousand. Initially, it was a twenty-seven requested and approved for twenty-one, we added an additional five for the gun buyback, and then we settled on thirty thousand for twenty-two as a result of both the, that fund is used for undercover purchase, undercover buys, special investigations unit, and gun buyback.
And the, and prisoner meals.
To a smaller degree, right, Mike, would we estimate that at about two thousand?
Two thousand, yep.
Yeah, for prisoner meals.
And how much the gun, the gun buyback, that was, I wonder, was that a couple thousand or more than that?
Yeah, we added the five in for twenty twenty-one, that's where the additional five in, but we spent, including what the Attorney General brought to town, we spent quite a bit of money this year, but it worked, I mean, we certainly got a lot of unnecessary firearms off the streets and made them unavailable, so, good program.
And the, the cameras that, that the council approved earlier this year, is that reflected in the budget anywhere?
That is reflected in the budget in two lines, one is going to be the phone account, that's gone up because of the use of the data cards for every camera system, we talked about them needing data SIM cards from Verizon, and also in the four seventy-one service contracts, we've also added that as well, for the maintenance agreement that expires essentially end of next year.
So the actual purchase, that's not reflected here, cause that's, that was a, is that a capital expense that was already completed?
That was, that's correct, the purchase order's already been complete, that's the twenty twenty-one purchase.
And so what else is under four seventy-one service contracts, what else does that comprise?
So the, I don't know if we provided you the full list on it, but essentially, that's anything contractual that we're obligated to pay for year to year, go quickly down the list on them. Four seventy-one includes the Axon body camera system, there's the cleaning service that we contract with from FMC, Mobile Cop, which is a system used for daily delivery amongst the patrol units, Lexi pole, and then we also have some money set aside there for maintenance, building maintenance through MCO.
Building maintenance for what?
Or from MCO, for building maintenance for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning.
Oh, that's MCO.
Yeah.
Never heard of them, are they, are they good?
Yeah, I, I put MCO down, realistically, we go with Lowe's bidder on these things, so usually it's a three or four month bid contract, we're currently, I believe, in the process of writing something for Citywide, so it will encompass all the buildings, not just the police department.
Can you hear me, Chief?
I'm sorry, what's that?
On the revenue side, thirty-one twenty, and no grants this year of federal assistance, and bonds, three, three, eight, nine, four, three, three, zero.
Okay, yeah, so I apologize, we're just, we're jumping around to revenue line now, is that what it is, Tony?
Yes.
All right, normally what happens is, we don't put those grants in until we, they've been secured. So in this particular case, we don't have any guarantees of grants, although we have applications out there, if you look in our past history, anytime we do receive them, we go back to council and ask for a revenue and an expenditure increase reflective in both the revenue line and then the, the expense line.
Anything else on thirty-one twenty?
Yes, can I ask a question, Rennie?
Yes, please. Either of us.
Hey Rita, I even know it, here's some laughter in the background, that's great.
I think you hear my grandson in the background.
That is awesome.
Yeah, yeah, Lieutenant Bonds, Lieutenant Detective, where, Lieutenant, is it?
Deputy Chief, got promoted to the number just.
I'm sorry, Deputy Chief, I'm sorry, hi, hi.
How are you?
I'm good, thank you, okay, so I just wanted to ask about the one oh seven, school guards and matrons, is that our resource officers? No?
No, the SROs are currently in the general pay one oh one account, they're put in as officers, detectives, sergeants, they still fit within the general pay, the one oh seven is representative of the crossing guards and the.
Oh, okay, so that's gone down like ten grand, what's, what's that about?
I just haven't been using them, there hasn't been as.
Oh, because you haven't had to use them, okay.
Well, aren't they, aren't we getting back to people going to school now, I mean, what was, is there other justification for reducing that?
For the school guards?
Yeah.
From the one oh seven, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, in the past, historically, we try to add more in there, but because we've used them for more than just the school crossings, that hasn't been the case, a lot of times, they're not available, you have to understand, it's a unique position, they're not really paid everything that they should be, which is difficult sometimes to, to get them out there, and it's usually for an hour, maybe two hours in the morning, and an hour, two hours in the afternoon, so it certainly takes a, quite the individual to be able to make the time for that, so we're looking for retired individuals that have the capability to be there, in some cases, when they can't make it to cover their corner, we have to send an officer out there to cover it. And a lot of times, you know, we'll do that out of a regular patrol division while they're working, and again, we try to frame them up as little as possible, but when necessary, we put them out there, so we feel confident twenty-seven is representative of what we'll need, I think that cut is, I think we're good.
Are we already locating the school guards, are you using, the school guards, what's.
There's a number of locations, I don't have them offhand, Tony, I can get you that list emailed to you tomorrow, but there are a number of locations throughout the city that we, we put them at, usually the high traffic corners, in some cases, we try to get them out there at the request of the school, in other cases, request of the neighborhood, so there was a year that the city tried to save, at the time, the budget was forty thousand dollars, we did a lot more corners at that time, so they removed it to save the money, and the next morning, there was enough political pressure that they put it all back. So it is definitely a hot potato when we talk about the school safety and the use of individuals to help kids cross the corners.
Well, I'm wondering, cause at the Marius and Washington Avenue intersection, it seems like coverage there has been rather spotty.
Yeah.
So is that due to a problem of, of hiring people, or is that because the pay is not high enough?
I think both, but it is, it's a combination of both, one, it's very difficult, we still have an outstanding part-time clerk's position, we're trying to fill as it is, just to try to get somebody in here, and part-time dispatch is just nearly impossible to fill anymore, we just can't find people, as it is, even, even police officers, we had a command staff meeting today, and it's not just our issue as far as a local agency, but it's all over, trying to recruit people to become law enforcement officers is, is very difficult, but yeah, in answer to your question, it's a combination of both the pay, the hours, and the inability to find people that can fit that.
Do you, do you have off the top of your head what the hourly pay is for a crossing guard?
Right now, we're at just under fourteen dollars an hour.
Okay.
And again, you know, depending on the weather, sometimes they rethink going out there in the cold, and an officer has to show up to do that corner.
Great. You don't have, I'm supposing you don't have any sense of how much of an increase in hourly pay would bring in more of a robust response to requests for new folks?
No, I mean, even our part-time dispatchers are trying to increase their salary as well, and they're, they're working eight-hour days, solid eight hours straight, and we're still having trouble bringing people in on that, so. You know, I certainly don't want to say it's a problem all over, I can only say it's a problem for us right now.
Yeah.
But it is a problem for us, it really is, we are having difficulty recruiting officers, clerks, dispatchers, we just can't get people to come in and even apply in most cases.
Okay, thanks, anything else for thirty-one twenty?
Yeah, hey Chief, is that, when you say it's a problem all over, the salary that we're bringing them in, is that all over as well, is that what other, or did you ask that question, Rennie, what other cities and towns, are they paying that, that amount to?
You know, it's hard to say, the truth is with us, most people for, you know, fourteen, eighteen, twenty dollars an hour, they could get that staying someplace warm right now, you know, Lowe's, Home Depot, somewhere's in there that guarantees them an eight-hour paycheck during the day, that's with the crossing guards especially, we're not guaranteeing that at all, you know, even our dispatchers, I mean, overall, our workforce, sworn officers, supervisors down here, you know, we haven't done a comparison for pay, but I think you'll find that we are on. You know, we're in the comparables for Hudson Valley, but when you look at our sister cities like Poughkeepsie and Middletown, and they, they, they offer more pay, they offer more pay to the officers, administrators, supervisors, to the detectives, to the dispatchers, you know, and, and I can tell you, as, as most of you already know, dispatch is a critical component, you know, that first phone call, and, and how it's handled, and what information's gained from it. It could make or break a case for us, so we're really serious about trying to get the best candidates we can, and in some cases, we'll bring officers in when dispatchers can't be mandated, again, we only have three full-time dispatchers, the rest of it will make up with part-time staff, so when you have a high turnover like we have in this past year, both with some of the part-timers and some of the officers. It's difficult, we train them, and then they leave, we train them, and then they leave, and in some cases, even though they haven't been offered employment with us yet, but they're on the list, we found even on this last set of hiring, that they, they took positions with other jobs someplace else, and, and in most cases, better paying jobs. You know, we're all, as was mentioned, I think Rita, you were at that community meeting, you know, law enforcement as a whole, State Police, Sheriff, City Kingston, Town of Tulsa, we're all vying for the same, for a slice of that same pie, you know, individuals that meet the standards of, you know, integrity, honor, you know, that, you know, it is now more difficult to get into law enforcement just by the mere background investigations that have to be conducted, you know, the deputy chief attended a program up north, right, and that was, changes at the state level that called in the Professional Policing Act, right, Mike, I mean, that was, just that mandated some changes within our own program here.
All right, thank you, anything else on thirty-one twenty?
Now, the next item would be thirty-one twenty-three, page eighty-nine, this is the training center, everything looks okay there to you guys, Chief, Deputy Chief?
Yeah, that's not, everything, I think we didn't, we didn't have any increases in the training line.
No, it's down from twenty twenty actual, but. Is that because of COVID?
Yeah, we had, we had decreased enrollments during twenty twenty because of COVID, and we're getting a little bit of that spillover even this year, hopefully, I think when things maybe level out, or we just eventually, the need is going to be greater than the, the risk, and people will start sending people to training again, but as a whole, discretionary training has been down significantly throughout the industry for the last two years.
Okay. Anything, anybody, anything else, anybody wants to say about the training center?
I just want to let the Deputy Chief speak to one point that you brought up at Command Staff today, Mike, just the figures normally for our, since we're partnered with Tulsa County Community College, Sue Yostar for the Police Academy, normal enrollment in the spring session, which is the part-time school, Monday through Thursday, and then all day Saturday, is what normally, typically.
Our part-time, our part-time session generally gets around forty applications, we start somewhere between thirty-five and forty students with them when the class starts, and our, and our fall class is usually somewhere in the twenty-five to maybe thirty range, as of this week, our upcoming spring session only has sixteen people registered to attend the Police Academy, and generally, that, we would have forty applicants at this stage of the processing, and we're down probably forty percent of what we normally see, the applicant pool is just shrinking.
And that may be then also a reflection of the general dilemma of finding people who apply for jobs, right?
Yeah, it's, it's certainly, it's, it's reflective in, in, you know, a lot of job markets, I'm sure, but certainly, right now, in policing, recruitment is a, a difficult task, and it's not just here, it's, it's across the industry right now.
Standards, the standards for hiring an individual have increased, I mean, we're, we're proud to say that we've been doing it this way all along, there's been some minor changes in some of the forms that we've had to submit to the state, but overall, our accreditation procedures have outlined how we do investigations, both polygraph, medical, and psychological post-offer conditional employment, what we're finding is, we're just not getting the applications anymore, and this last exam applied just for the City Kingston total count that took it, Mike, was?
We had, we had like fifty-two people that applied and thirty-eight people that passed, and historically, we would have civil service exams with over three hundred applicants on them, you know, sometimes as many as four hundred, and to have only fifty applicants and only thirty-eight that actually passed, you know, we're trying to fill, we just fill, potentially, we're working on filling nine spots out of that thirty-eight already, and all. out of that 38 already in all anticipations. We'll have to test again in 2022 just to keep a viable pool.
So when an individual, and I'm just, I'm taking the opportunity to kind of speak to council about it, that we're trying, right? We you were kind enough to, you know, working with the mayor to give us the three positions. We're trying to fill those, but at some point, we just can't find the bodies that are qualified to get those positions and and, you know, civil service has their responsibilities as well, but some of the things that they have in place, we have to get through before we can move on. So currently, as I mentioned before, hired two, they're starting already, young individuals that are local residents. Um, but the remaining numbers have to be kind of just filed through and and of those, we're just, we're concerned that if we lose any more, uh, we may not have any more on our civil service list to choose from, which puts us in the tremendous dilemma because our next exam isn't scheduled until September of 2022. So we may go a couple of months without with vacancies that need to be filled that we just don't have people to do. So when an officer, if Jill Smith decides he wants to be a cop, uh, he can essentially shop for the agency and certain things may pull him in one direction than another. Maybe he's local to Kingston, maybe his family's in Kingston, or maybe he, you know, maybe he's driven by the the money, right? If if all the agencies do the same amount of work, but I can make $10,000 or $15,000 more by driving another half an hour, then that might be better for me. You know, and and the fact there's changes in the retirement system and and some of the changes in the contract have had me made it a little bit more enticing for other uh, agencies to essentially, you know, promote it. Uh, we are looking at this next exam on changing how the exam is is, uh, what it costs. And the Dutchess County had some success with their recruitment on that charging for the exam, uh, and also kind of coming up, making a little bit more lenient as far as the requirements and giving them some time to work out those requirements over the course of a couple of years once they're hired. But our standards only require a high school diploma or HSC. So I think for us, you know, starting at that baseline and moving forward, we have benefits in the contract that I think that other places don't offer, but at the end of the day, if you do a comparative analysis of salaries and benefits, and as most people do, they'll say, why should I work for them when I can work here and make more money or drive less or it's just a, it's a numbers game and, you know, right now, we're just not getting the numbers.
Rough. Um, all right. Anything else there? Well, we'll see if John Tuie can keep bringing in some, uh, some of that good tax revenue in the county, sales tax, and then we'll look at increasing pay. It's all his problem.
Your guy's solid.
Last item for KPD is 3510, page 90. This is control of animals. Insert joke about your least favorite person here.
So we currently have a contract with the Olsas County SPCA. They do all of the animal control and have been, I'll give them a a huge plug. Uh, they have been tremendous to us, responsive. Uh, they work well with the residents. Uh, I've had zero, zero complaints to my office or my administration. Anytime they're involved, when officers need them, they call, they call and they're there. Uh, so the contract is is definitely worked out well for us. Uh, I think the revenue lines are listed in the clerk's office. I think that's in their budget.
Well, we see dog licenses and yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, the one, the one instance that I had to get in touch with him, things went really well, so I can attest to what you're saying. All right, any members of the finance committee have questions regarding control of animals? If not, then, uh, well, we can thank, uh, thank you too for coming tonight. Mike, I got to tell you, I was in my backyard and I heard two deer. I overheard him talking and one of them said, look out for that Mike Vons. Apparently they've got your Facebook page.
It was nice to have a week off with my sons, I'll tell you that.
Look fun. All right. Thank you, guys, for coming. We really appreciate the work that you do.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we're going to talk about the comptroller. Anybody know where John Tuie is? Anybody seen John Tuie?
I'm right here.
Oh, there he is. Okay.
All right. Do need a chair.
He disguised himself as a comptroller.
Yeah. Glasses and a mask here. It's gonna be
So while John's getting set up, we're going to go to page 17, first of all. Page 17 in the budget book. This is parking violations. Okay, I'm just gonna get a drink of water. All right. John, let me know when you're ready.
I'm, I'm ready.
Oh, okay. Uh, so we're looking at, uh, page 17, parking violations. This is, uh, section 1130. Uh, see ya.
The mayor's proposal. 412, $10,000.
Uh, 412 is, that is our, that is the contract that we have with Passport Parking, a company that uh, I'm not sure which way am I looking, looking towards the camera here. Uh, Passport Parking is the company who uh, the city contracts with to provide software and support services for our our parking enforcement. They provide the handhelds, the actual equipment that our our meter personnel use. Uh, they pro- provide the ticketing software. They do all the SCOTF laws with DMV. They communicate with uh, all 50 state DMVs um, by half of the city. So we we've been in contract with them for a number of years. Uh, so their their fee is based upon a percentage of the ticket collections. So is the ticket collections change, their fee changes?
All right. And then is that related to the potential increase in the revenue from parking violations?
Yes. Yes.
My question is, is that realistic?
The the 360?
Yeah.
Well, I I tend to look at the history in the, in the account to see where we're at on a year-to-date basis and and, you know, with an understanding of any changes that we need, that we may have in parking enforcement in future. Obviously during COVID, we were severely impacted in terms of not just coin collection, meter collections, but also violations. Uh, pre-COVID, we were at roughly $450,000 in parking violation revenue. Um, in 2020, it dropped down to 184,000. Therefore, we did bring, you know, based upon that expectation that, you know, the parking, parking violation revenue would continue to be impacted. We did bring the the estimate down to $315,000 in the budget this year, 2021. Uh, we just hit that target, uh, this month. So we're at 315 right now. Uh, in all likelihood, we'll end the year somewhere in the neighborhood of 350. Um, I do think it's reasonable that we'll be at or about 360 next year. Uh, you know, hopefully we'll, you know, be a little above that. Uh, but we are still seeing a significant decline in the number of cars that are uh, out on the street. It's not, it's not the same level it was before the pandemic. So uh, we're not going to get to, uh, at least in the short term, it doesn't appear that we're going to get to the pre-pandemic levels. You know, in 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 the short term, right? So at some point, perhaps next year, you know, things will get back to normal.
Where in revenue does it show the coin fees?
Uh, that is a little later in the budget. That's, uh, that is in department 33 20.
Does this, did you forecast losing the parking lot next year at the Exxonian?
Yeah, we we we, well, we take into account that and we took into account Broadway, what's happening on Broadway. Um, we've lost the, you know, meters on Broadway for a good stretch of Broadway. Um, so, you know, that impacts not just the meter revenue, also the violation revenue. So yeah, we 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 look at all Yeah, I mean, do you want to cover that as well right now, Randy, the meter revenue?
Uh, um.
That is on in department 3320. Or do you want to wait to to get back to, we'll get to that later?
Um, let's just go in order here.
Okay.
That's okay with you?
It's fine.
Okay, so anything else relating to that parking violations section? Not, then we can go on to 1315. This is page 21, comptroller's office. And we see a pretty big jump there, John, in the regular pay, $45,000, almost $46,000. What's that all about?
Uh, this was the item that we discussed during the city hall meeting. Uh, this is primarily, primarily, I mean, there's also the mayor's proposal, uh, increase for CSCA, but the only structural change here that's adding, uh, money of any significance to this line is the junior accountant position that will be split between grants and my office. Currently, we have one, one person who is split between both offices. This would add a second position to split between both offices. And the expectation is that one of the two positions would likely be situated in the grant's office. The current person is situated in my office.
Uh huh. So that's the junior account clerk, right? Cause already the uh, senior account clerk massa is in both offices, right?
Right. See, the senior account clerk massa works for both and he currently resides in my office.
And what is the consulting line, uh, 411?
Uh, 411, that is, uh, for some diff- uh, it's mainly for accounting-related, uh, reports that we have, we have to have an annual actuarial calculation on our post
Yeah.
uh, on our retiring, uh, health insurance cost. That's a large one. Um, and also then, uh, any, uh, ARPA grant consultation we might need. We'll probably need some, we'll need some level, we expect to need some level of ARPA-related uh, compliance consultation that would, you know, be absorbed in that, in that line. Quite frankly, I'm not sure that this line will be enough, but uh, at least it's a starter, it's a placeholder.
Okay, I'm sorry, the, we moved on. I wasn't quite done with regular pay yet. Uh, there's, there's this position, finance and parking administration, which was new in 2021. But it looks like that's getting phased out in favor of something called administrative account clerk. Am I reading that correctly?
Uh, yes, well, yes and no. Um, the original position, when it was originally presented uh, as part of the 21 budget, I don't believe that had been adopted from civil, the position, the job spec, I don't believe was adopted by civil service. So that position was the proposed name for that position. Uh, the job spec that the civil service department, uh, later adopted was, uh, administrative account clerk position. So it it was just a change in the job title.
It seems like there was a significant change also in the rate of pay that went up about 25% from 51,000 to 65,000?
Well, that's part of, that's part of the mayor's proposal. The, uh, the person now, uh, yeah, so the per- the employee that's in that position now is uh, I don't have the salary schedule in front of me.
Well, it's a different title, I mean, that's, that's why it's the
Well, no, the, the, the increase has nothing to do with the title. The increase, that person's been in that title since, uh, early this year. The increase is related to the CSCA proposal of what that title would receive in terms of compensation under the mayor's new, uh, plan. So that person currently is, that per- per, that position is currently on grade 18. Um, I can confirm what step. Right, so that, that position is currently at 57672. That's the current pay for that position. So that position, you go and 57672 is the current pay.
For that, that position?
For that position in in the current bargaining agreement. Correct.
And it goes up to 65,000?
Uh, under the mayor's proposal, uh, yes, it goes to 65.
So, but there's a in in the past year, wasn't the salary for that position more like 51,000?
No. No, I'm not sure where that number's coming from.
Okay.
Into the two departments, it looks like, right?
Well, the, the, the position, what the, I, I don't want to get too much into personnel, but um, you know, you have different positions. There's also a, uh, a parking supervisor position which was eliminated in the 2021 budget. So that, that position, I'm not sure what the salary was in that title, but that, that was a different position.
So what percentage is?
Right, so at one point, there was a, um, yeah, I'm, I'm just not sure. I mean, that, this position is, is grade 18. And the planned position last year was grade 18.
So it's a 13% increase from the calculus, John.
I'll, I'll take your word for it. I
57672 from 65, that's a difference of seven, a little over 7,000. I think I can buy that into a little salary.
Well, I think, you know, if you look at, well, we've talked about it a number of times with the mayor's proposal, it's, you know, that, that position that the person that's in that position right now is not at the top step of that grade, right? So that person is going to jump more, um, than others.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
All right, good, thank you. Anything else then in this, uh, in the comptroller's office? I mean, this particular part?
Where are we at again?
1315.
What pages are?
That starts on page 21.
All right.
Rennie, I'm sorry, what page was that?
Uh, page 21.
Hey, Johns, I got, thanks. The revenue side is going up, so a few items going up. How is that, is that just based on sentences or is that part of the, I'm looking at sales and stats, revenue sharing, mortgage tax?
That's on, on 1315?
$1315 in revenue and taxes.
Well, yeah, so 1315, um, the revenue sharing, that is, uh, that's a number we get from state.
Okay.
Okay, that, that restores the the state aid to the, uh, pre-pandemic levels.
Okay.
Guys, so that's basically puts us in line with what we receive for, it's been around a decade now. Um, but it's been a number of years. The mortgage taxes of the city share of uh, the mortgages that are issued or written in, in, uh, the city The mortgage tax is the city share of uh the mortgages that are issued or written in in uh the city of Kingston. And we obtained data through, you know, not just collections, but we also have conversations with the county. Um, we see what our historical trends are. So obviously, you know, you see there's a lot more activity in mortgages right now. So, you know, and home buying. So we've seen a pickup there. Uh, the sales tax, I mean, that's something that we've talked about all year. I mean, that's just been tremendous. Um, we're currently on pace to uh even exceed that number this year. Um, you know, in all likelihood, with some of the pickups that we've seen since this budget was even written. I mean, we're currently at twenty, almost twenty five percent over prior year in sales tax. I mean, that's you use, you see different things here, you know, the inflation um and the number of consumer items you see in uh vehicle fuel. Uh, you see in materials and supplies, almost everything you purchase right now is is up. And the actual purchasing itself appears to be up significantly as well. So um we tried to budget the sales tax for two thousand twenty two conservatively, expecting that there could be some dip. You know, so I I think the the current proposed budget for two thousand twenty two, uh, I think it's achievable, uh, you know, short of some type of, you know, economic setback. Um, but I think it also insulates the city a little bit, and in case there is a small setback, you can absorb it.
We don't see the revenue for real estate-related transactions?
Uh, that would be uh in the account in thirteen fifteen, uh, and it's three oh five, so that's on page twenty nine.
Thank you.
Guys, I have page twenty one. So you say right now we have twenty five percent of primary of sales tax.
Yeah, so we're we're on pace right now this year. Um, if I, if we, we're on pace to break seventeen, to break seventeen million in sales taxes. You know, it's this we're we're at thirteen seven right now. Let's pop up a spreadsheet. We're at thirteen seven right now. We're twenty four point six percent over the prior year. If our collections for the remainder of the year are great, even with last year, and that's, you know, conservative, probably, that would be another three point six million. Uh, that puts you around seventeen point three million uh for this year. Um, there was one collection last year that was up very significantly from the prior year, so I'm waiting to see how that pans out. That was up uh almost five hundred thousand dollars over the prior year. Um, but absent of a a significant adjustment there, we should hit uh seventeen million or close to it this year. So it's just, it's just such a large pickup from year over year. I do think you have to be careful. I would tell you, bunch of that number for next year and, you know, not grow a a unhealthy reliance upon a sales tax number.
It's
Yeah.
But yeah, this one with the door handle account.
Yeah, no, we look at, I mean, in that number two, I mean, you know, I spoke with uh, you know, different representatives at the county level. You know, we did our own trending, our own estimates and, you know, everything that we came across, you know, all all the different inputs kind of led us to the same place.
Okay.
You know, so, uh, still, it's a, it's a two, almost a two point four million dollar pickup year over year in the budget, so um certainly helps.
And the pilot number is uh declining?
Pilot number's declining. We had one pilot uh come off the the schedule that they're actually not paying tax.
Which one was that?
Uh, Golden Hill. So that came off. Um, so now they'll be getting a tax bill next year. So that's the the change there, but the
Is there a new pilot in there for Golden Hill?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and and that that revenue there, there's actually a schedule of all the different properties that we collect pilots for, and we estimate some of them aren't defined numbers. Some of them are set numbers. Some are based upon um rents, so you know, but there is a schedule for that.
Okay, anything else in the thirteen fifteen line? If not, then thirteen twenty, the auditor, this is page twenty three. We saw a little bit of change here, John. Well, actually, a significant change, twenty something percent. Uh, is this what we pay to the to the one auditor, or is there something else involved here?
Uh, it it's all that, it's everything that we pay to our primary auditor.
And so does that just mean that their fees are going up, or are we getting more services or?
Uh, it's a combination of both. Um, there, we have a set fee, but we also have fees based upon additional service. Uh, this year for uh a couple of the departments, they had some uh additional billing. They had incorporating, it gets it gets a little complicated, but uh the water department has another auditor, and they had to integrate uh the water department audit into our audit, and there were some differences of opinions between the auditors. Uh, so there's fees related to that. Um, there is also some additional fees. Where did we see the most significant additional fees is that and uh with the community building department, we had received billing for additional services. So there's a base pay, but if they spend significant time in an area that uh is not part of the base audit, uh, we do receive uh additional service bills for their, at their hourly billing rate. So uh just conservatively, I I put a number in there, expecting that we'll likely receive some level of additional service billing for next year.
Okay. Anything else on that, on the auditor? If not, then we'll move to thirteen thirty, page twenty four, tax collection. We see a private increase there in the regular pay is the due to the raises, C S C A raises?
Uh, yeah, I believe so. Yeah, there's no the only change I have to, I'm pulling out the um, because we've had, we've had a couple of retirements running in my office. So some of it could just, it it's probably that, but some of it's also um you're, we have people at uh leaving that were higher pay rates. I'm looking to see who was in that department last year. Yeah, so that 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 department is, that's purely just the uh the C S C A increase. It's the same, the same people, the same allocations.
Okay.
That's
Yep. Anything else on that issue? If not, uh, I think we can skip thirteen forty, which is related uh uh some office supplies, that's really small. So we'll move to thirteen forty five, page twenty seven, central processing, I'm sorry, central purchasing. Thirteen forty five, page twenty seven.
What's changed?
Yeah, there's um, you know, the change there's the C S C A proposal, regular pay. Uh, everything else is pretty, pretty stagnant. Now, the the expenses for that department don't change much year over year.
All right, if everyone's good with that, we'll move to thirteen sixty two, uh, tax advertising, page thirty one. Not much there.
There's a um big jump on contract expenses for assessment. Um, line four eleven under thirteen fifty five.
Oh, which, that's uh, that's the successor.
Right, we skipped that though, right?
Uh, that was part of the city, that's part of the city, city hall meeting.
Yes.
That's it, that's
Oh. Okay.
All right, so we're on page thirty one, tax advertising. Not much change there. All right, then the next item would be uh nineteen ninety. This is contingency, page fifty. So John, what's the significant difference between requested and recommended?
Uh, the significant difference there was um at the time of the request, we didn't have the, uh, I don't believe we had the fire M O A.
Okay.
I have to take a look. Um, I know, I was pulling up the budget. It's orig- an original requested budget, I believe the fire contract, the fire increase was in contingency. And then once we had a uh an M O A, it got moved out into the, to the recommended, out into the actual salary lines. Yeah, it went from one point four down to sub ninety eight.
The difference in the fire contract?
Yeah, the fire contract.
Is it ever, is it just a fire contract? Is all the C S C A members moved out of here? Some of the money or?
No, well, basically, the the contingency, you know, there's, there's a small amount of money that we'd like to have in there for something, you know, undesigned items, right? Because it's for items that come up during the year that you don't know at this time, right? Right? But then you also have known items, but you don't have known amounts, which would be uh expired contracts. You know, the largest thing right now that have to come from contingency is you have a lease contract uh that expired in two thousand nineteen. So we have looming is uh potential increases for twenty twenty one, twenty two for uh the K P B A.
Nice, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, so.
So in terms, the C S C A contract is also expired, so any chance that that would be um completed within twenty twenty two?
Uh, the C S C A contract?
Yeah.
I I would hope so. I would hope that we would have, be able to get a long-term contract done in twenty twenty two.
So there would be some back pay there too, right?
That I don't know. That I don't know.
But I mean, you feel like you're comfortable with this basically eight hundred thousand dollars here for both of those contracts?
The how much the
The total's around eight hundred thousand in contingency is what you're looking at. And so you've got the potential for two contracts to be resolved that might have back pay coming.
What this, I don't think this would accomplish, uh, I don't think you would have enough if you had retro for C S C A going back to last year. I think Yeah, I think this, this would be enough for three years of uh, three years of of K P B A. It would be enough for the next year for C S C A. Um, potentially, if you had retro for the prior year for C S C A, but I think that would uh, that would kind of close. It wouldn't leave much money for other items.
Yeah, well, I'm wondering if if we're doing this big raise, whether that could be a uh an issue so that there wouldn't be retro pay. All right, any other questions, comments about contingency? If not, then we'll move on to thirty three twenty two, on-street parking.
I have one question. And you got, I'm sorry. Good job. And do you have the figures of where he wants it?
Contingency right now?
Yeah.
Um, we had just added a hundred fifty thousand back to it, so I believe it's just over a hundred fifty thousand dollars. I don't have that number right in front of me. I think the um, that hundred fifty thousand dollar transfer to add money back to the contingent's contingency will be voted on by the council next week. Um, besides that, we're under ten thousand dollars in contingency right now.
How much?
We're under ten grand right now. We're adding a hundred fifty back. But I do expect there are some departments where as part of the year-end closeout are going to have to come to for contingency. So that was our budget.
Now, John, are you concerned at all with what Randy had to say about that two, that those two contracts coming to fruition, fruition? And then we might have to do that retro pay. I mean, is that a real, real issue, or could we find that money somewhere else? If we needed to? I mean, well, it's not contingency. Where we're going to get that money from if we settle a contract? Or will we not be able to settle a contract at all?
You'd be able to settle contracts.
Okay.
The the police, the police, you have three years planned for in contingency. But once again, I mean, these are placeholders, you know, you know, the market has changed. You you don't know what these are going to settle at. You still have to negotiate with the unions. Um, but, you know, right now, is adequate for one year of C S C A and three years of the police. It's pretty close.
Hey, John, that's close. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, then we can move on to thirty three twenty. This is on-street parking, page fifty one. We noticed a significant jump in uh regular pay here of about twenty percent, a little under.
I'm sorry, where am I, where?
Page fifty one, on-street parking.
Okay.
Section three three two zero. You request a hundred fifteen thousand and it's uh recommended at a hundred twenty seven thousand. And so we see a change overall from the previous year two of uh an increase of eighteen thousand.
Again, the finance and parking administrator gave, created a administrative account clerk.
Well, but once, once again, the the two thousand twenty one budget had that position in there, had the finance and parking administrator position in there. Um, the title that was adopted by civil service ended up being the admin account clerk. Uh, it was able to be taken promotionally, uh, will is a promotional position.
Also, that's the, that's the difference there, between that person, that person, because that person was another
I want, we once had a parking supervisor position, and I believe that we talked about this at the two thousand twenty one budget that by creating this a different position, this finance and parking administrator, which later became the admin account clerk, when it was adopted by civil service, gave us the ability to have a position that, a supervisory position that just didn't oversee parking. That actually, you know, had more value, had, you know, uh, additional responsibilities in our office.
Okay.
Um, you know, we've had a number of retirements and, you know, when you face retirement, you got to get a little creative and you try, you know, you, that's the time if you're going to restructure, you restructure. And uh, that's what we're able to do, and it's been successful, so.
John, how come in the budget book on page fifty two, it lists that administrative account clerk as half-time?
Uh, right, because that that position is split between on-street parking and the comptroller's office.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, um, if you look on, Randy, if you look at the back page, John, page is one seven, Tony's got it committed to memory here, one seventy six, it has the uh, the full allocations listed.
One seventy six?
One seventy six, yeah.
Hey, John, I got a a payroll kind of question. Now, if we go to the seven-tier system, let's say I'm in a job and I want to get a promotion. So I go ahead and I take some kind of test to get a promotion sometimes within your, within your uh field, right? And then you get a promotion, right? With this, with this system, I might not get any extra pay, right? Because I've promoted within the seven steps, right? I might still be on the same step. So what's the, what's the incentive for someone to uh try to get a promotion if they're not going to get a raise in pay?
I I think it depends on what job title you're talking about. So every job title in the, in the mayor's proposal is on a, one of the seven grades, right?
Right.
So if the position you are applying for, if it's on a different grade, you will get a raise. Uh, for some reason, it's not on the same grade. Um, then that, that's a different story. You'd have to give an example, but, you know, I think we talked about you know, one example is a driver, a laborer and a driver in public works on different grades, right? So there would be an increase there, but it's just going to depend on what position. If you're doing a lateral transfer, you know, positions that are more equivalent, there might not be. Though, once again, I mean, when you have, when you have seven, right, you have seven grades versus eighteen grades. You know, there's, you know, there's less gaps, right? When I say less gaps, there's, you have more positions on each grade. So once again, it just, it depends on what specific position.
So you're starting out at the bottom of the grade, or you're at the top of the grade. I mean, what's, what's the incentive now for anyone to get a promotion? If they probably will never leave that grade because their position that they like is in that grade, you know? Or the thing that they do is in that grade. What, what's, what's the, what's the incentive?
I, I, I can't speak for everyone's incentive, but I can tell you that, within, use my office as, as an example, within the clerk series, there's a clerk, there's a senior clerk. I think there's an account clerk, there's a senior account clerk, now there's a, there's principal account clerk, there's administrative account clerk. They're not all on the same grades in this scale. So there are financial incentives for moving up.
There are.
In, in, in that series. Um, I, I haven't analyzed this proposal to death. I mean, I, I haven't. But, you know, to the extent that your position is on a different grade, there would be a financial incentive for you moving up. But we're getting off, I think, off the track of my, my department's budget.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, I just wanted to.
I think the point you're raising, Patrick, is really important. Let's make sure we bring it up tomorrow night when we do the budget review, okay?
Yes, thank you. Sorry about interruption.
No, no. It's something we're all wondering about. All right, so, um, anything else then with On Street Parking? If not, then we'll move to fifty-six fifty-one, which is Off Street Parking, page fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. So we see the loss of an employee or at least some work time here.
See where you're at. Uh, you don't have a particular individual allocated to that department. Mostly expenses are pretty, pretty level with the prior year, as is the revenue.
Yeah, there was regular pay of ten thousand something in twenty twenty, but nothing now.
Right, so that, that goes back to when there was a parking supervisor in the budget. Now that, that position is no, we don't have a parking supervisor, now it's the admin account clerk. The allocations are split between two different departments and it's not, previously, I believe, was split between three departments, now it's two. I'd have to go back and check to turn that, that the, the parking supervisor was budgeted to, partially to that, this account, five-six-five-one.
All right, yeah, the rest looks pretty consistent. Anything else on that for anybody? If not, then we're going to nine zero five zero, page seventy-seven, Unemployment Insurance. And this has gone down seventy-five thousand dollars, John?
Yes, so during, uh, the state is currently absorbing the cost of, of the unemployment that was previously billed to the municipalities. The bill was applied in two thousand twenty due to fraudulent and legitimate claims. To the state's decision-making, but they made the decision to absolve the municipalities of, of the billing. So currently, we are at zero expense year-to-date. The twenty thousand dollar budget for next year would put the, that's more of our historical norm that we've run at. So if the state makes the decision to not absorb the cost, that would at least cover us for next year. Historically, we've run in that, we've run in that twenty thousand dollar range per year.
Okay. Uh, next is nine zero six zero, page seventy-eight, uh, hospital and medical insurance.
Yeah, that's, that's retiree medical. So that's, you know, we, we take what our known, well, we project on what our known retiree population will be in the, in the future. Come up with an estimate based upon the, the health cost trends. We have a, a little bit of an increase there. I can tell you that i- in general, we are probably a little less conservative with our health insurance numbers year-over-year, you know, just trying to be mindful that, you know, we have been running in the black for a couple of years here, so. You know, I, I would expect the hospital, medical, possibly the retirement accounts to be a little bit tighter next year. Um, that's not unintentional.
All right. Anything on that? I think the next two items, nine zero eight-nine Cobra Insurance, nine one eight-nine Dental Insurance, those are pretty much holding steady. So without objection, we'll move beyond those to nine seven eight five, page eighty-one, which installment purchase debt. Can you tell us, John, what this, um, the, uh, the increase in the installment purchase principle, what does that mean?
Uh, that's basically a lease. Um, we're running off, we have a lease in a number of years. Uh, we have a lease that expires in a couple of years. That's just, uh, if you, if you add the actual, the, the principal and interest payments that year, you know, from one year to next, they're the same. So obviously, as you, you know, you, you pay off the loan, uh, the principal portion goes up, the interest portion goes down. Uh, but we're near the very end of this, and unfortunately, this was a, this is a lease that was entered in before my time. It was a non-cancellable lease. I couldn't refinance this. This is one of the few things I wasn't able to refinance.
A lease on what?
Uh, it was equipment. Um, there was energy-efficient equipment. Um, I think it was lighting in City Hall. Uh, there's a number of things that were in the, in that lease. I think it dates back to two thousand seven timeframe. Yeah, it's, uh, the interest rates, the interest rate's over six percent and you can't, you can't renegotiate or cancel it.
Right.
Everything else has been refunded, refinanced. It, it's part, it was part of the agreement that was entered into at the time. At the time, the mayor, the council at the time, you know, authorized that lease, but, you know, it's, at the time, it might not have been a bad deal, but now with the interest rates we're looking at now, you know, it's not something that you would advise, but at the time it was, you know, a way to fund the improvements at that time. At that time, the interest rate wasn't out of whack. But just what made it a little problematic is the fact that it could be canceled.
How many more years?
Uh, I think it's done after, it might be next year that it's done, or the year after. It's, it's, it's almost done, I can tell you that now.
Okay.
Yeah, it's at the very, it was a fifteen-year lease, so going back to two thousand seven, so yeah, next year might be the last one.
Great, so the next item then is nine nine zero one, page eighty-two, this is the debt service. It looks like we've seen a change of this, a fall by about a hundred thousand dollars.
This probably should be looked at in conjunction with the, with the ban ninety-nine fifty, but the, the transfer to debt service, that's simply what our bond payments are scheduled in any given year. So, you know, despite the large number of capital projects we've been taking on, uh, we've been able to manage a somewhat level debt service in the, in the general fund, so. Between the short-term and the long-term debtor, our payments are actually, uh, they're actually down year-over-year in the general fund, so that's, um, that's good. I mean, we're taking advantage of some low interest rates right now. Um, it's almost free money when we're, we're borrowing short-term. I mean, the interest rates are absurdly low. But you got to be mindful that, you know, at some point, they're going to go long-term with it, the rates, you know, and you're still going to be paying a few percent on, on the long-term, but, um, we've been able to structure the debt pretty well, I think. So, you know, we have some budgetary savings there. You'll see when we get to the sewer fund, it's the opposite. You know, we have a lot of, some sizable sewer projects that, you know, are increasing the debt load over there.
Need our sewers. Nine nine zero two eighty-three, Risk Retention. That looks consistent. Any questions there? If not, then the last item under, uh, the, this part of the comptroller's budget is nine nine five zero, page eighty-five, Bonds.
So that, that's our, that's our short-term debt. So that, that payment there is what would be scheduled upon, on the, the short-term note that we took out in August of this year comes due August of next year.
Great, so any questions there? All right, in that case, we will move to the Sewer section of the budget. One nine three zero, which, page one fifty-eight, these are Claims.
Yeah, it, this account, Rennie, is more, but it's a placeholder. You know, we have a, a general fund equivalent of this. This is, um, you know, the claim to go through the city parks budget. You know, we have a five thousand dollar placeholder in this, in a sewer fund. It rarely gets touched.
Okay, great. I went back to contingency for, um, the sewer fund. I see this, this is nineteen ninety, page one fifty-nine. There's a significant drop here in contingency.
Yeah, uh, well, you know, the, you know, the budget, you know, the mayor made the decision to get, make the, the sewer budget a little bit leaner this year. There certainly was pressures with, uh, you'll see the debt service costs increased a bit. Some of these, you know, larger sewer projects, sewer-related projects that were taken on, so.
Is he, he's hoping to get some state funding or other grants for that?
Well, you know, the, the, the one state project, uh, the, the large project, you know, John Schultz has come talk to us about that. Yeah, I mean, there's a number of avenues that he's looking at. Um, we are currently, we're moving to proceed with EFC on that, which would mitigate interest costs on that project, but, um, regardless, it's going to be a significant cost to the city. Yeah, it's, the, the driver right now in the sewer is going to continue to be the, the capital needs of the city sewers in the treatment plan. I mean, it's, it, it's such a small budget relative to the general fund that, you know, when you look at the total dollars, that it, it can't absorb the debt service cost as easily. Uh, you're, you're talking about a total expense budget of just over five million dollars. Right, so you're adding, you know, five million dollar projects. Right, it's, it causes some pressures, so. Fortunately, with the sewer-related projects, they generally can be borrowed over a number of years. Usually, you're looking at twenty years for these. Um, so that does help, but, um, the budget tends to fluctuate a little bit more than the general fund. So, but one of the ways to try to level out increases in the, in the sewer use fee is by reducing that, in this case, the sewer contingency budget. So certainly will be less leeway sewer fund next year with the budget as adopted. Uh, and just so we're, you know, where, you know where we're at. Right now, the projected sewer fee would go up next year by four point nine three percent, go up under five percent.
Anything else on that? And you're comfortable with this drop though, John?
I don't, I don't love it, um, you know, quite frankly, but, um, I see the need for it, right? I mean, you know, you can't do anything with the debt that we have out there right now, short of not doing projects. I, I do support the decision to lower the contingency to mitigate the sewer increase right now, you know? We'll have to monitor it going forward. I mean, is, you know, if the twenty thousand's signed up, we have to increase it, then then we'll have to bite the bullet, but I don't think we need to do it this year. You know, try to, you know, do the right thing for our taxpayers and keep the, uh, the rate down as, as long as we can. You know, you, and you'd also rather have, you know, smaller increase in routed spikes. So this, this prevents right now, at least there, there won't be a spike. If you kept the contingency at the, the prior amount, you'd have an increase probably over ten percent in your sewer rate, so. Uh, this, this helps keep the increase under five. But, you know, it's, it's a decision, right? Prose and con.
All right, uh, nine oh six zero is Hospital Medical, page one seventy-one. Not much we can do about any of that, right?
Yeah, that's the, um, I'm sorry, which line, Rennie?
Nine zero six zero.
Yep, so those are, those are the sewer-related retirees. Those are, you know, just, that's for them. Pretty much everything after that is debt-related.
All right, so those are the items that are on pages seventy-three to seventy-four. Does anybody have any questions about those?
Seventy-three, seventy-four?
One seventy-two to one seventy-four, this is the installment purchase debt, the debt service, and the transfers relating to the debts that, uh, the bond debt.
Yeah, so this is, once again, that same lease, uh, the installment purchase, Rennie, is the same lease as with the general fund. Next year is the last year of that, so that falls off. Um, that'll be a nice pickup for the two thousand twenty-three budget, uh, for the sewer fund, that two hundred, almost, well, four hundred forty thousand between principal and interest, uh, on that lease per year in the sewer fund, that'll come off. Uh, the transfer to debt service is just the bond payment that's scheduled. We know what that number is. And the ban is the, uh, the principal and interest payment on the borrowing that we did in August of this year.
All right. Looks like we're at the end of the comptroller's budget request. Any big questions anybody has out there? Any outstanding issues you want to discuss there? All right, unfortunately, it occurs to me that there were four items in the, um, capital plan for KPD.
Yeah.
So, uh, John, with the police vehicles, they're at two hundred eight thousand dollars. Last year, we used that to, uh, bring down the, um, fund balance. Would that be the same recommendation you have this year, or would we go back to a short-term loan for those?
Um, I, I think that's a decision, uh, it certainly, we certainly could. Um, the mayor's proposal was to, uh, to borrow for it, but you know, I think that's possibly a decision that we can make tomorrow night or talk about tomorrow night, but I, I would support the use of fund balance for the police vehicles. Uh, they're three-year assets. So if you borrow from them, you have to pay for them over three years anyway. All right, you know, one, one thing we could talk about, Rennie, is if, if, you know, in general, when you do, when you do pass a bond audit for this, um, what we have been doing with the fund balance is when the audit comes in, we can always go back and ask for, uh, the transfer from fund balance to pay these off in full. So keep in mind, when you're borrowing for these items, you're still paying for it over their useful life. Just because you're borrowing for, say, police vehicles or equipment, doesn't mean you're borrowing for it for twenty years. You can only borrow for it for as long as, uh, you know, the, the law allows you to borrow for. So for police vehicles, three years anyway. Other equipment, a lot of this equipment's five-year equipment. So potentially, when we get the audit in next year, we can come back and pay off a lot of this. Um, and right now, the interest. Um, and right now, the interest rate is, is very reasonable, so, um, yeah.
Any questions, Patrick? Yes, start with the next one, I don't know if you answered.
Yeah, any other questions then?
Any answer about illegally binding by a car every three, you know, pay for your car in three years, he answered.
Yeah, we, well, we can't let the police vehicle, we, we have to, if we're gonna borrow for them, we have to pay for them within the three years. We can pay them off quicker. But we can't borrow longer than three years. Then you have other assets that you can only borrow for five years, some are ten years, some are fifteen years, but you can always pay off quicker. So, you know, my recommendation in general has been, you know, where we have the extra fund balance, let's use some of that to pay off some of the shorter-term assets.
Is there any penalty for paying off quicker?
No, I mean, you know, the, the only thing you have to look at is the, the interest for carrying it for the year, but right now, I mean, we have um, or I'll just tell you, our most recent borrowing was, uh, given the interest rate, you'll probably laugh. Our most recent borrowing in August of this year, our interest rate was, our net effective interest rate was point-one-seven percent. So on a, yeah, sixteen million dollar borrowing, our interest for the year is about twenty-seven grand.
Wow.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, no, it's, it's the power of a good credit rating and a good, uh, you know, a good market and uh, so.
Yeah.
All right, anything else relating to the comptroller's budget or to the uh, police department capital?
Why not?
What's that?
We should be building housing with that cheap money.
Get on it, Patrick.
It's a marvelous review.
Tomorrow's the review and then on Wednesday will be the uh, the um, the night when we do all the reconciling, the budget wrap-up, there'll be a lot of, potentially, a lot to discuss that night. Um, a lot to consider. I sent out two items today, just so you know, to everybody, I sent out the management handbook. Uh, because this may come into play as we talk about some of the potential raises for our managers. Um, page seven is the most important page probably, is the one that lays out the two crucial criteria for awarding increases in pay to uh managers and to management confidential employees. I'd also suggest that there's a limit of one-point-five percent uh for those increases. Uh, the other item that I sent was a comparison of um, different municipalities and what they pay different uh, um, uh, positions in their municipalities. So I chose the ten uh cities that were immediately larger than Kingston and the ten cities that were immediately smaller population-wise. So you can look through there and you can see, for example, city clerk, it says what uh different city clerks make. Uh, one thing to take into account though, and be careful of, is uh, some of the mayors look like they have a very low salary. But if you look, you'll see that those municipalities tend to have a uh city manager and that person receives a much higher salary. So in other words, some of those low-paying budget, uh, low-paying mayor positions are offset by the fact that they've got a city manager form of government. So uh, take a look at that. This is one of the ways that we can help try to figure whether or not we think that uh management confidential employees are getting fair raises, too high, too low, what have you. I'll have some other uh materials to send out tomorrow, uh, so keep your eyes out for that as we try to figure out uh whether we want to make any changes to the budget and if so, which changes.
Thank you for putting it together.
Yes, we'll keep working at it. We've got all the way until Wednesday night.
Thanks, Randy.
If there's nothing else, then we'll call this meeting adjourned at eight o'clock here on Monday, November twenty-ninth. Good day, everyone.
Good night, all.
Good night, good night.
Night.